And Dwight Thiesy was there and I said, what's going on? He said, class is sixty-five. He says, but I noticed that a lot of them are really coming up and now.
He saw me when we did the museum thing over there.
You know where the law enforcement is out there? Nick's throwing out the law enforcement.
You're ahead of me. He said, you played baseball, didn't you? Because I was, as a sophomore, I was on the varsity team.
Mr. Chair, can we start?
No.
Thank you. I've already started.
Good morning, everyone. At this time, I'll call the Crow Wing County Committee of the whole for October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one to order. At this time, we'll start with number one, Cara Griffin. You'll give us an update on the out-of-home placement numbers.
Good morning, commissioners. Here to provide the third quarter update for our out-of-home placement budget. So as you'll note, our point in time reflects that we have one hundred and forty-one kids in out-of-home placement. The tread line is heading in the right direction. We do have nine kids that are in independent living status. We did have one youth that was able to remain in care past his twenty-first birthday due to a COVID waiver. Any questions about point in time?
When you say they could stay past age twenty-one, how long past age twenty-one can they stay with that waiver? Or is that over with?
It did end.
It did? Okay.
The second area of interest is residential. We only have three that are currently in residential placement. We had sixteen kids enter care during third quarter. That would be compared to twenty-one during the second quarter. Eleven of those kids entered due to parent substance abuse, three related to domestic violence, one physical abuse, and one due to the youth's mental health. We had twenty-four kids that left care. Six of them were returned home and seven were transfer of custody or adoption. We have sixteen youth in the adoption queue that are waiting to be finalized, and we have zero out-of-state placements at this time.
How does the sixteen in the queue relate to other quarters?
So last quarter, we had seventeen. So there's some churn, some that are finalized, as you'll note, seven that were finalized, and then another, probably six, that moved in.
Okay.
That are waiting to be finalized. So we're on track to meet, I think we last year had forty finalized adoptions or transfer of custody, and we'll be on track to meet that again. For corrections placements, they have seven youth that are currently in out-of-home placement. They had six last quarter, so they did have an increase of one youth. That number continues to be trending low or at a lower status than in previous years, and I think it's due to the workers using least restrictive options and making sure that we're keeping kids in the community. They have three that are in residential settings, three in a group home, and one independent Any questions about the corrections placements?
So when you say they're using less restrictive measures, is that still effective in the outcomes?
I would defer to Krista in regards to the recidivism of them continuing to offend or come back into the judicial system. Is that your question?
Yes.
I'm gonna phone a friend here.
Good morning, commissioners. We have been using the CIBS program as well as our crossover worker as well, which those outcomes have been doing extremely well. We have not had additional, the kids that are returning home or that we are placing in with relatives that are reentering care. As you can see, as our residential placements are trending down, they are not reentering into a higher level of placement at this time.
So those strategies are working?
Yes.
At this time? Always knock on wood, but it's at this time it works, so, okay. Thank you.
Then finally would be the budget. So that's this worksheet with lots of numbers on it. Just as a highlight, they're also listed on the top of the spreadsheet. Our actual spending is a little over one million under budget as of the end of September. We expect that we will come in with three months left that will come in under budget in comparison to our 2020 actual costs. It'll be about a four percent decrease.
Is there any notable reason why we would drop four percent?
You know, I think in general, just the trend of our numbers, our out-of-home placement numbers are remaining steady, continuing to have no out-of-state placements, looking at least restrictive, so using the CIBS model, keeping kids within our community, using family foster homes for those kids that have highest needs, and putting plug-in services into those homes to keep them here, and then just the overall reduction in residential So it's a number of variables or factors that influence our out-of-home placement budget.
Well, I'm thankful for it. I don't want to sound like I'm not thankful for it, but it's an interesting number that changes almost on a daily basis. Chris Coring?
So Cara, so looking all the way back to two thousand fourteen, I'm looking at that sheet you said, that social service placement budget, and it's one million five hundred forty-three thousand, and then if you go over to two thousand twenty, four million three hundred thirty-five thousand. What changed in that amount of time that that would skyrocket? Is the world that much more dysfunctional in five years that it would be up that much? I mean, it just seems odd, or are we, or are we, I mean, on the lookout, more diligent? Or what is the reason for that?
So in two thousand fourteen, and the budget worksheet is the number you're looking at?
Right.
Yeah. And then you'll notice, when you look at the point in time report, two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, our unduplicated number of kids in care, one hundred and eighty-eight, one hundred and eighty-four. So we started to trend up in two thousand fifteen with the number of kids that were entering into care, and we had some judicial system changes, as well as just systemic changes within Crow Wing County and across the state of Minnesota. And that's when we started to see that huge increase to our out-of-home placement budget because of that backlog. So it wasn't necessarily that, so while, yes, societal factors continue to increase, so untreated mental illness, use of chemical dependency, the awareness, the population increases, so the reports increase, but yet, systemically, we had a backlog of kids that were remaining in care due to not getting to permanency, not having the adoption paperwork filed timely through DHS. And then that's where we started to shift internally to make a difference in what we could influence. So for example, the board allowed us or gave us permission to hire a crossover worker so that we could have kids get out of detention, so if they're arrested and they're sitting in pre-adjudication, we could get them into treatment, or we could get them to a family foster home to work on their mental health, their untreated mental health, or if there was chemical dependency, getting them into a Rule twenty-five versus sitting in a correctional facility, not receiving services at a much higher rate of care. So four hundred dollars a day versus maybe fifty dollars a day in a family foster home setting. So that was one significant change that we did here locally. We also started to increase our prevention services, so keeping kids from going into care, and then we dedicated a full-time staff to adoptions. Chrisat is the staff that we said, we just need you to focus on the paperwork, the transfer of custody paperwork, the adoption, making sure that everything is in place, and putting pressure on DHS to make sure that we were getting that paperwork back to us in a timely manner. So then we cleaned up those cases, so to speak. We had almost double the number of adoptions because kids were sitting in care at a much higher or longer rate, technically we have twelve months to do permanency or have a permanency plan. So there was, not only were there societal issues, there was also systemic issues.
And the court system not getting things processed quickly enough, is that part of it too, or?
Yes, that would have been back when we had the backlog, yeah, most definitely.
I don't, I guess I don't understand this whole court system. I mean, somebody commits murder, and then three, four years down the road, ah, the trial's starting today, and it's been three, four years. How can this be? It don't even make any sense to me.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we can really answer that.
Well, I guess we can't. Well, I'm just venting, Mr. Hool.
Yeah, I know.
And I have my election certificate here.
I didn't want Kara to take a stab at it. We don't know.
And I can assure you, Commissioner Coring, that...
I should.
The other thing I would note here is, the line that you're looking at, Commissioner Coring, is the budget line. Now, look one line below that, it's the actuals. What I want to point out to you is, there's a lag time. Look at two thousand fourteen actuals, one point four million, two thousand fifteen, one point six. We don't have that one point six figure when we're setting the budget for two thousand sixteen.
Right. But what I'm getting at, even if you look at the actuals, in fourteen, it was from one point four million, and then in two thousand eighteen, it's four million one twenty-five. I mean, I'm trying to seek out, what is the problem? Is there anything that this board can do to help?
Funny, he says that, because we're just, we're starting a conversation about that very topic. Are there resources that we need in the system that would help to adjudicate these things faster or to move more adoptions to final? And so I'm going to ask, I'm asking Cara that question, if Krista has any ideas, or Kara has any ideas? Anybody in the system got any ideas? At first, I think, there was this running idea that the county was somehow withholding resources. I'm waiting for the resource ask. So if there is something we can do, which you see is, the amount of money we're dealing with here?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Holy cow.
And this is levy dollars.
Yes, this is. I'm just showing you that this, you remember we describing, we're chasing this number?
Right.
That lag time of, you're looking at a year-and-a-half-old figure before your budget. That also was contributing to the demise, is we were chasing a number that was rising very fast.
And Commissioner Coring, to your point, you know, we, our agency has always appreciated that when we have brought ideas forward, such as the crossover, pursuing the Systems of Care grant, that the board has supported us with those different interventions that we have applied. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
I think the work of staff to provide resources in the community is a significant contributing factor to community-based alternatives to out-of-home placement. We're not going to create great citizens by sending a kid to Utah. Mind you, there might be a kid where that's the only alternative we got, and so if we need to, we will. But I doubt that's going to create a good citizen.
Well, I would just say that, you know, as you know, I don't like hiring more people, but if somebody came forward, I'm, I'll have an open mind. If somebody comes forward and has an idea of how we can, we can help, this board can help to fix this. I mean, because that is troubling, when it's just like, one, two, three, just in the course of four or five years, it's tripled approximately. That's kind of spooky.
So what you just heard, what you just heard from this board, holy moly, and that is why I bristle when I hear from the bench, Crow Wing County won't provide the resources. Crow Wing County has been getting by on the cheap. It's inappropriate. If someone's got an idea, we're all ears.
Ask Deb, because Deb, every time I ask her a question, she's, I try to stump her.
She knows the answer.
She knows the answer. That was a good, that was...
I don't answer, so I don't...
What? Are you serious? Finally.
There you go.
There you go.
This is a good report, Cara.
Yes.
Your staff is doing good work. I know they're working really hard, and COVID has not been easy on this staff in terms of what you can do and what you can't do, and when I come and meet with the unit, I'm just impressed with the work that's being done by the social workers, the probation agents. You guys are doing great work. It shows, doesn't it? And the ideas that the board, that you guys did bring, they're working. So it's a good report, very good report.
Well, thank you. Make sure that message goes back to the staff, because it takes all of you folks doing this job together to make these things work, and we know how difficult they are. It's, you know, what works today might not work tomorrow, but what I'm confident of is that you folks are on top of it and trying to figure out what the next move is to mitigate some of these issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing further.
Well, I wrote down what Commissioner Coring said about staffing. I will remind him. I don't know that we'll get it through, but I'll remind him periodically. But we do support what you folks are doing, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
One of the backlogs I'm noting is, I do hear of a fair number of continuances and delays from our contract attorneys. If that's a bottleneck, we got to clear it. So there are issues there.
Okay. On to number two, the direct care and treatment, the DNMC, by Tammy Luick. Welcome.
Good morning. So we've put this report in front of you before, so this is through third quarter, so I'm hoping it's becoming somewhat familiar. State facility costs include the cost of care at Anoka Regional Treatment Center after thirty days. It's twenty percent of their cost of care. Those under commitment that no longer meet medical criteria in either the AMRTC, so Anoka, or one of our CBHHs across the state, and that's when they don't meet medical criteria. Our mentally ill and dangerous that are typically held at St. Peter, but we do have backlog happening at Anoka, and then our sexually dangerous population.
Tammy, remind me when they raised the, sort of the COPA, the cost of care, the twenty percent. When did that take place?
I wrote that down here. I think it was, so we've been having those shifts happening all along the way, but I believe the cost of care, one happened in approximately two thousand nineteen, so, but be kind of between two thousand sixteen, two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, we're still seeing some of it, and I'll speak to that here in a little bit, where we're getting kind of these continued shifts in cost, where they'll shift a cost of care or shift one of their, I'll just give the example now, so that'll help. So we just recently got a bulletin from care, from direct care and treatment, indicating that when an individual is not participating in treatment, that we will now be charged for that percentage, that their cost of care. So, and typically, people are not at care unless they're committed, and so they are not usually very engaged in treatment, especially when they first arrive. So we're going to see how that one plays out, but that's concerning to us because the reason they are committed is because they are not willing to do this voluntarily. So that's just an example of how they're doing that.
Or we won't get charged?
We will get charged.
We will get charged. Okay.
So that's just an example. That one just came out, I believe, in September of this year. We, I serve on a direct care and treatment work group, and we brought that to their attention. They thought that they already were doing that, and we were like, no, you're not. And so we have brought that forward to say, this is another time where you're doing this cost shift to the counties, when in fact, I mean, the individual that goes to care most likely, as I said, wouldn't be engaged in treatment, especially initially.
So let me get this straight. The court commits them, and then we're responsible to make sure that that individual participates in their program?
Correct.
How do we do that? Thank you. The answer was great.
Yeah. You know, we do that during, hopefully, we do that during prescreening, you know, so when we prescreen an individual, the hope is that we get them to do things voluntarily, but that doesn't happen, so.
Okay.
All right, so I'll move on, if that's all right. So on this report, you can see the current daily rate at Anoka and at the CBHH. We are responsible for a hundred percent of the daily costs when an individual no longer meets medical criteria for that inpatient hospital stay. In two thousand twenty-one, we've had three individuals who have not met medical criteria, and we have kept that to sixteen days total. We had one review, and the review process started, that got approved in legislation in two thousand twenty, and, or we could start doing them, it got approved in two thousand nineteen, we started doing them in two thousand twenty, but that's where we can actually say to the state, we can put forward a review request, saying that we don't believe that we should be held liable for the cost because we feel that we had everything in place for them to be moved to placement. And so Nathan had done one review this year for an individual that we felt that the state prolonged the discharge, and we were able to get the reduced, the cost reduced by two thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Probably doesn't seem like a lot, but it's just the idea of that we are getting some reimbursement back and pushing the state on these discharges.
So Tammy, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
But I want everybody to understand that when they're at Anoka, there's social workers, state-employed social workers there, that are supposed to have a, create a discharge plan for these individuals. They're not able to discharge that person because of different reasons that that social worker identifies, but we're held responsible because they can't get their job done. I know I'm being harsh to them, but that's a fact. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so we have to pay for that. What ensures us that they're doing their job to the best of their ability?
Yeah, you know, I think that's, through that work group that I'm participating on, those are some of the things that we're trying to address, to say, where is the, where is it falling down? And so they've implemented, Direct Care and Treatment now has implemented a, you know, a review of the discharge or the stay of the individual that we have there, so we're encouraging our staff to complete those so that they get the feedback if, you know, if it's a particular unit at Anoka, if it's a particular social worker at Anoka, that maybe is not as timely with discharges. As you know, one of the things that we did three years ago is our Adult Mental Health Initiative, worked to put a regional transition specialist in place, and we think that's made a huge impact as well in really holding, really starting with working on that discharge plan with the state upon entry into the state facilities.
So to me, this is similar to an unfunded mandate, because when you guys, as social workers, are charged with doing something with a client, you have to do it, period. You have to do it. They, on the other hand, don't necessarily have to meet all their goals, and they penalize us financially for something that they're responsible for. And I just want that noted, that that's an unfunded mandate, in my opinion, and I have a lot of those, by the way, just so you know.
Mr. Chair, I think the answer to your question is right there. If you don't actively manage the commitments, then what you described results in those charges. When you actively manage it and you hold those social workers accountable to, we have a case plan. We want them to come back to our community. This is the good work in those last two years that Tammy is describing with Nathan, and her work on that work group, she's being quite modest, frankly. She is training folks around the state. I've seen it at AMC, she's been at AMC conferences, training folks on how to actively manage their commitment process. That's the answer. If you don't actively manage it, that's what's going to happen to you, I think.
It will. Absolutely right.
And so this too is a really good report, driving your commitment costs down by, this is almost the same thing, community-based alternatives to out-of-county placements. It would be better for us to get a mental health worker on the porch so that we might avoid some of the commitments, which is also something we should talk about with our ARPA dollars, but that's for another day.
Yeah, so just to finish up, I just wanted to highlight just a couple of things. We've already kind of stepped on, talked about a couple of them. Prescreenings for commitment, so the actual prescreenings that we are doing for commitment, we have, we are returning to our pre-COVID numbers. Two thousand nineteen, we did a hundred and ten prescreenings for commitment, two thousand twenty, seventy-nine, and through third quarter of this year, we're at eighty-one. And so we will be very close, if not over, our numbers that we had in two thousand nineteen. Another point of interest would just be to note that we have had an uptick of commitments and stays over those that are voluntarily agreeing to things in the community, and so we're kind of keeping our eye on that. Our goal is to have sixty percent do voluntary services in the community, and potentially forty percent would go towards kind of the involuntary. Right now, we're at fifty-four percent for commitments and stays and forty-six percent for voluntary, so, but we're hoping to continue on that. The weekly commitment meeting, Tim, that you mentioned, we are really working hard. We've been doing this for at least two years now, where we review weekly all of our commitments. We review approximately twenty-five cases, and sometimes we're, and we're talking about those individuals that might be reaching DNMC. Our regional transition specialist does participate in that meeting as well, and the regional transition specialist typically works with about ten individuals from Crow Wing County at any given time, but has twenty-five cases from the region. And really, the goal of that regional transition specialist is to help that case manager and the social worker at the state identify and find placement options for the people upon discharge so that we don't have people stuck in the state facilities when they no longer need to be there. Mike Willey, our regional transition specialist, for the first half of this year, our goal is to have the DNMC days be on an average under five or under. He's at two point six days with the individuals he's been serving, and in two thousand twenty, he was at four point eight days, so just a little bit underneath the five. And then Mr. Hool also gave me a little bit of a segue to the last area I wanted to talk about. Another area that I feel has been impacting this work is our collaboration with local law enforcement. We have the two embedded social workers in the jail, and that is from, we've had grants and the support of the board here, and so I just wanted to highlight that because I do believe that that's allowing us to provide early identification and screening, and it's helping us to get connected to people earlier, and sometimes this still does lead to involuntary services, but we believe it's happening in a more timely manner. So I wanted to mention those things and how we can continue to work with our local law enforcement and potentially get out into the community and be identifying and working with people earlier before things maybe rise to the level of a commitment.
Thank you very much. Any questions? And I will just say what I said to Cara, we appreciate everything that you folks are doing, and in fact, the whole program over there, you folks looking out for, or looking to find those strategies that you can put in place to mitigate these expenses, it's reflected in both of these reports financially and by the numbers of the individuals that are impacted by your services. So thank you very much for everything that you're doing. We appreciate that. I think it's a gold star for Crow Wing County that we're addressing these issues and being effective in addressing these issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That wasn't so painful.
Good job, guys.
All right, number three, easement request for Patrick Watson in Timothy Township, Ryan Simonsen. We all have maps.
Another easement?
Another...
I'm going to change your middle name to Ryan Easeman.
That's the only reason I come.
And I think we have Mr. Watson online?
Thank you.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, Ryan.
Good morning. So Patrick Watson, he purchased the parcels outlined in yellow in May two thousand twenty-one. They were tax-forfeited parcels. They'd been for sale for, I think, since two thousand nineteen, didn't sell at a couple of auctions, and then he purchased them over the counter, and they are landlocked. They don't have legal public access. And Mr. Watson has been working with landowners to try to get an easement from the old grade road over to his property, and he's been unsuccessful in that request. The landowners won't allow him a full easement across the property, but he has been able to get permission from the Manhattan Conservation Corps to allow him to cross just a corner. And so the proposed... And so the proposed easement there in blue is on tax-forfeited property. And then he would get just a corner of the Manhattan Conservation Corps to allow him to get into his property. So that's kind of the backstory on that.
Okay, so let's see if Mr. Watson has something to add first. Mr. Watson, would you like to speak?
Uh, yes, no, that's exactly right. I haven't been able to get anything straight through the other landowners for the most part, reason being they don't want to give up free land. So now that they know they can't just use the land anymore, they're not real open to allowing me to do it. But I was able to barter something with the, what, that's the gun club right there. They have a shooting range and allowing me just to cross that corner. So I did make a, a good attempt to not have it be this, but I am going to need some help from the county to cross your property for the portion to get me back to that corner.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Corrigan?
So just a little background, so, so these, we at Crow Wing County sold these, it looks like 120 acres.
Yep, correct.
So do we not have, why, why did we sell those parcels?
They were isolated and landlocked from other county lands, public lands. So it was 120 with no access, no legal access. And so that's on the bigger side of what we sell. Normally, we'd try to sell 40s and 80s, but, you know, with 120 acres sitting by itself, we, we thought that'd be a good idea.
So couldn't access it, is there trees in there? Or would it be in our timber management program, or?
Yep, there's, there's a good Aspen forest and, yep. But just, we just didn't have legal access, so.
Nobody would let us have access to it then, or?
We hadn't reached out recently. The timber was, I'm not sure how old, but decades since we'd been in there.
Okay.
The last time.
So you're gonna, I, I don't understand the map. The old grade, what is the old grade? Is that a road?
That's a public road, yep.
It's a public road, but it looks like it's green and then it goes to kind of a yellow. What is that, why does it stop in the middle of that 40?
The, the township maintains the green portion.
Yes.
And then the county maintains the rest.
So, okay, so he has access all the way to where the blue line starts?
Yes, it's public the entire way. That's just the difference between who maintains the road, essentially.
Okay. And then it looks like it's just a straight shot in there. Where does, where does he have this easement? Where is, where's that at?
We, we just ran it along the 40, 40 line, parcel line.
Uh-huh.
There's no wetlands there, it seemed to be the cleanest route just to get straight over, yep.
So the, the brown ones are county land, or?
Uh, the ones with the no fill, there's kind of an 80 there, that's county.
Right here, this?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Well, I don't.
I don't see a problem.
I don't see any problem. Makes sense.
Bring it forward.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll add this to the board agenda next week.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Thank you.
Easy.
Number four, the American Rescue Plan Act. Mr. Hul.
A little bit of a mouthful, isn't it? American Rescue Plan Act. We've referred to it as, you've heard it referred to as ARP or ARPA. It's the American Rescue Plan Act. These are the federal stimulus dollars that we most recently got. We have a total of $12 million coming to Crow Wing County in two different allotments. We have received the first allotment of $6 million already, and we are not eligible to receive the second $6 million until at least a year has passed. So we're coming forward today to talk with you about a proposal for the use of those ARPA dollars in the community. The first one is, we're suggesting that you open a grant application process, and we're trying to alleviate daycare shortages in our community, and we believe that there's some capacity that we may be able to assist in creating. We believe that the daycare right now is one of the limits that we're experiencing to economic growth. Historically, we would be chasing smokestacks. But right now, we're chasing people. And you can see that by driving down Washington Avenue and looking at the Help Wanted signs. So daycare is one of the things that we're hearing, is a, an issue for people trying to get into the workplace. So we're proposing a budget maximum for that at $500,000 at this point. There would not be a limit on each individual application. The county would reserve the right to fund something less than the total if you deemed appropriate. We would leave that application window open until November 30th or a four-week minimum, depending on when the board action occurs. I'm interested in getting feedback from you on whether we should advertise. I'm tending not to because I think we know who licensed providers are in the community, but there may be someone who would want to start something that isn't. So we could consider some advertising if you're interested. Bladech would use its application system, the same one we've used from the CARES grant process, to oversee that application process. Grant agreements would require repayment if it's later found that they did not meet the eligibility criteria. That's fairly standard with what we've done in the past. And then I would suggest appointing two board members to review and recommend these applications for funding, and the applications then would be brought forward for full board action at a future board meeting. That's the first one. Do you want me to stop after each one to just discuss each one?
Yeah, I had a question too. Do we know where we're at? I thought, wasn't there a, some work being done with the Y MCA as far as daycare? And I thought, and I'm not sure if Cara knows, but CRMC was also exploring. Do we know where those stand as far as? Or would they fall into this, I don't know?
Daycare, they'd fall in this bucket.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioner. Tyler Glenn, Executive Director of Bladech. I'll first address Commissioner Hoag's question regarding the YMCA. The YMCA currently has a purchase agreement in place to, to buy a building in downtown Brainerd. They are in search of funding for that. Their first grant application, which was the Main Street Revitalization Act, that grant application was denied. That was going through the Initiative Foundation. We have submitted a second grant application request for them for a childcare assistance grant through DED. That funding, that amount was $300,000. We submitted that on September 30th on their behalf. We hope to hear back by the end of this month whether they'll receive those fundings. That fund would help them purchase the building, but then they're still roughly $1 million short of renovation on that process, on that project, property. So this build-out for them would add roughly 85 available slots. But our number right now currently is, we're 1,200 slots short in Crow Wing County just today. But we don't know who's going to go back to work either, so that, as far as getting out of their homes and, and moving some of these kids out. So yeah, to address the whys, that is where they're sitting right now. I've also been in the meetings with CRMC, but I'll let Cara address that.
Oh, before you leave.
Yes, sir.
Where do you, how do you come up with that 1,200 number? Where, where do you, where's your statistics on that?
So we did a, we completed a study with the assistance of the Initiative Foundation and First Children's Alliance, and we polled all of our daycare providers in Crow Wing County, center-based and home-based, and that's where the number came out at, that where each one of them is identifying the total number of slots that are needed to fill what is being requested as of today.
So if you polled them, if they, if they have room for 20 kiddos, then, then they might have, do they have a waiting list? And then, then that's what they're saying?
Correct.
Hey, I have a waiting list of 40, and then you, is that what?
Correct. Yep, that's where the numbers are coming from.
I see.
83,000 as far as the state is concerned. And that's just a number we're getting from the state as of today, so.
Okay.
It's a pretty significant problem. And, you know, when you look at some of the home-based daycare facilities, you know, depending on who's in those, who starts one of them up, you know, they may have legal capacity to have 10 kids. Some of them can have more, depending on the, the number of providers that are in the houses. But our center-based facilities, some of them that we're talking about over in Crosby right now, you know, they, if they start one, it's 25 kids. Here, it's 50 kids there. But the thing that we need to continue to remember is these are rotating slots. So, you know, if the YMCA opens a facility and it's for 85 kids, 50% of those slots are for infants and toddlers. So those rotation, those, those kids, as they transition out, those numbers continue to rotate over. So the impact can be quicker, I would say, based on how quickly some of these facilities can get opened and get licensed.
Well, I just, I, I think we can, this is a good thing, we're looking into this, but if we think that we're going to figure out 1,200 new slots, I think you're, we're dreaming.
Yeah, and you mentioned at a, at a previous meeting, the sustainability, and that's kind of stuck with me as far as you're saying, how do we help this and how do we make this sustainable moving forward? It's people. We need, you know, and as we look at these and, you know, some of these facilities, they just, they need licensed daycare providers. We need people to, to fill these slots. And we're looking at some, some avenues with the Initiative Foundation and how we get more people trained, how they figure out, some of these grants are going to assist in how they can pay these people better. Right now, an average daycare provider in a center is making $13 an hour. It's, it's a hard living to make at $13 an hour.
No, and, and just another thing, Doug, I, is, okay, so yes, this is, this is the Lord's work. But I know for a fact that the nursing homes, Bethany, for example, they are struggling because there is no workers. I was told by the daughter-in-law of somebody that's staying there that they're, they're, and I shouldn't be saying this because I don't know if it's, if it's a fact or not, but I was told that they're, they're going to close Station 3 because they don't have enough staff. You know, so, so I, you know, I, it, it, you know, what, what bothers me, and you, you can chime in too, is because I was in the legislature, this was legislative stuff. This is not county commissioner stuff. I'm sorry, folks, but this, we're trying to do legislative stuff. Why? You know, but it, but I guess we've got to do what we can for our community, I guess.
Yeah, and our employers are telling us today that this is a mitigating factor for hiring somebody. You know, you look and say, someone wants to go to work at, I'll just pick any one of them, claw stamping and making 12, $17 an hour. They're in situations now where somebody's not going to take that position because they can stay home, they need to stay home and take care of their children.
Yeah.
And so it's a, the domino effects here are pretty significant. I mean, we need to, we need to create slots so more people will go back into our workplace. Every one of our, is, is, as Administrator Hul mentioned, drive up and down, everybody's looking for employees. So it's, it's one step, and I look at this as it's one step in the right direction. And I think we can really make an impact here if we, if we put some resources towards this.
Okay. Commissioner Hul?
And I don't know if you can answer this, but of these 1,200 openings or shortage, do we know how much of it's the lack of a provider versus the cost to, to put a child in daycare? Because I've heard several people say it's, it's cheaper to stay home because they can't afford the cost of daycare. So if, if we build this, you know, build these numbers up, is it going to be too expensive for people to take their children there, I guess, is the?
I think that's a, it, it, it's a, it's an age-old question, but it's, it's, it's a factor. And as you, but that's where some of these, you know, there's, it is expensive to, to put your kids in daycare, we know that. But there are some of the, some of the steps that are being taken, especially by our center bases, is trying to reduce that cost and, but still be able to hire quality people. You know, I don't think we're ever going to get away from, you know, the cost of daycare is the cost of daycare. I don't think we're ever going to get away from that. But the center-based facilities seem to be able to manage that number and keep it where it's at a little bit easier than a home-based provider because a home-based provider is you're, you're providing a living for yourself. So there is some challenges that come with that. And as costs and as wages go up, there are things that, you know, they're going to have to be passed on somewhere. But wages are going up in other industries as well. So we hope that it's, it's, we hope it's that it ends up being the situation where you can afford to go to work and do, and, and pay for daycare. Because the daycare environment is a tremendous environment for most children. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a step in the right direction. But it is expensive. There's no doubt about it.
You, to Commissioner Corrigan's point, the state has to weigh in with the more sustainable options for the employment side because we can't sustain it. And so Commissioner Corrigan, you are absolutely correct. The wage rates for people who work in nursing homes are largely determined by the state's reimbursement rate for medical assistance and Medicare. They have to do something because they are not attracting talent like they need to. And we saw action by the governor this past week to deploy the National Guard potentially to assist in nursing homes because of those staffing shortages. The same is true in daycare, and the state needs to invest more in the sliding fee daycare assistance. Now, I believe we still have resources available. So that is not, that should not be the barrier at this point in time because we can help people based on their income, get them to work instead of that decision to stay home. We'd rather that they got to work. We need them to work.
Desperately.
So think about the daycare. We're not going to deal with the employment side, and we've wrestled with these. We really would like to, but a bonus, it's very transitory. What needs to happen there is the rates need to go up, and we can't sustain that. So the state has to step in and do that. What can we do? On the daycare side, if you look at nursing homes, it's not that the bed went away. It's not that the capacity went away, it's that there's not adequate staffing. In daycare, the capacity went away. Remember the video that we showed you where the number of family home daycare slots in greater Minnesota has gone down? That's capacity.
But the only thing is, is the question, another question, I think is a good question, is, let's say we build the capacity up, let's say we have a facility, are they going to be able to find any help to take care of these kiddos?
The state won't help with the capacity. They should help with the employment, but I can't guarantee that. But if we don't do anything, I can guarantee the outcome.
We need to definitely get more people into the field than, and it is a pay situation, certainly. The Initiative Foundation has worked with one of the community, one of the local community colleges and put into place where they're going to assist, they're going to basically pay for tuition for these individuals to complete the program. If they don't complete the program and get licensed, obviously, they won't pay for their, their schooling. But it is a really kind of a neat option that they've looked at and said, how can we get 25 to 30 more people in an eight-month program back into the system to be able to help with the employee side of it at the, at the daycare facilities as well? So CLC's looking at it right now. There's, there's options out there. It's just, this is a big problem. We can, we can certainly, with some of this funding, we can help that. We can help with the licensing, we can help with the startup costs, we can help with, you know, hopefully making this a more sustainable product. But it's, we still need bodies, just like everything else. But this is a great step in the right direction to help that. Using, utilizing these funds that are eligible to be used in this manner.
Tyler, does, does CLC still have a program where they're licensing or, you know, training and licensing?
They do. They do.
So let's have Cara step up and talk about CRMC.
Get up here because I might forget something. So both Tyler and I are attending the CRMC meetings. And they have a space identified at the school, an old band room space. They have some tentative numbers sort of around that and some preliminary look at the work. They're looking at actually 24/7 childcare because of the hospital and the shift work there. They are very engaged, as are other community members, in moving this forward quickly and looking at funding options. I did mention that we would be meeting with you folks to talk about ARPA funding, and we'll keep them in the loop about the application process if it were to move forward. They have some potential folks who could get licensed in a POD model to be able to provide childcare that way. And then the school would manage potentially the staff for those POD models. What else, what am I missing?
How many kids does that, are they talking?
25.
For the two, two PODs, potentially.
So that's 25, you say, but you're talking three different shifts. So are we talking 75 then, potentially?
I think you could look, I think you could certainly look at it that way. I, I absolutely think so. And CRMC's response is, is we have, we have growth and expansion plans. We can't meet growth and expansion plans without a model like this.
And they're willing to accept outside kids other than their employees' kids?
Correct.
Correct?
Well, it'd be the school district that's housing the facility. So it, it wouldn't be necessarily all CRMC employees utilizing the space. It would be.
Within the school district.
The area would be utilizing it.
The other thing to note here is, we're intentionally, um, broad in what we would allow someone to propose. And it is because those are the folks that are closer to daycare work, and we presume they would have the best ideas. And so I don't know what they will propose. And it could be on the staffing side, it could be on the facility side. We left it intentionally open so that you could see their ideas and select what you think are the best ideas.
So you bet you the advertising. And the, the point you made is that there could potentially be someone out there who wanted to start one. And so from my perspective, I want to be open to that, and I think that advertising should be part of this proposal. Because we don't know about Pequot and Crosslake and, and those areas where somebody might want to start one of these. We don't know what type of facility, whether it's home or, or more of a business-type setting. But I think that, that it would be important to recognize that somebody might step forward and with, with the need that we have. We don't want to miss those opportunities.
But how does, what does that model look like as far as advertising? I mean, do you put it, nobody gets the paper anymore. I mean, I shouldn't say that, but, um, I, I don't think, unless people get the physical paper, so do you put an ad in the paper? Or do you put it on the radio? Where do you, where, how do you reach these people?
I have, so with the work that we did, obviously with the CARES grant, um, applications and the economic assistance grants, uh, we built our database out to roughly fourteen-hundred subscribers to our, that subscribe to our email system. So we send out what's, through constant contact, we would send out, in essence, a flyer, you know, identifying the program, identifying what is available, putting some of these bullets in there. We have a really, we have a really high open rate, which still surprises me, but we have a very high open rate on our emails that sent out because the information that we've sent out in the last year has been extremely beneficial.
What does that mean? Can you tell if somebody's opened your email?
Yes. Yep. Yep. So when it comes to you, Commissioner Corrigan?
Well, we don't have to pay you for that then, do we?
What's that?
Just, we don't have to pay you for that, just send it out.
We will send it out. Absolutely. But no, that's the.
We don't pay you for that.
That is one way. We can also, we can also use, um, you know, the, the chamber. We can use those as a, them as another, just as another avenue to get these out. Those are.
Maybe we don't have to pay for it then.
They're both, they're both free.
That's really the question is, do you want it in other places? Because we will send it to.
Well, I guess, that's my question is, where would it be though?
Through the chamber, through Bladeck. The question is, do you think we also need to do outreach? We could do a newspaper ad or two or three or whatever. We also, I think on CARES, we focused a little bit more on radio ads, um, and we did run some radio.
How much are you talking about? Just, do you have any idea?
I think it's up to you guys. Give a budget, and if you set a budget for how much you want to spend, it's going to dictate how much airtime you get or print space.
Radio's pretty effective.
I thought it was, if you want to reach someone. I guess that's what I would do.
How much?
I would say five.
Hundred?
No, five hundred. Five hundred bucks, you're gonna get about two ads.
That's a lot of advertising.
This isn't your campaign where you only spend two dollars and fifty cents on publicity, so.
I will also say that I'm addressing this at every council in the meeting. So I attend all of our council meetings, I'm getting time at every one of them. This will come up at every single one. I have a meeting with the City of Emily at ten-thirty today. Somebody has approached them about opening up a daycare facility in their community. So we are having these conversations as well, so.
Tyler, do you think we need to advertise then on the radio?
I do.
Okay.
I just think it's a, you're gonna, you're gonna reach a different audience. And I, you know, we've had three in-home daycare providers in the Kuyuna Range area that have closed in the last six months. And do we, with this type of money, is, is, is that what brought them out? Would they come back? They're probably still licensed, so.
Why are they closing?
Some of them are indicating it's time to retire. Some of them are saying it's just overall workload, um, licensing restrictions, things like that that are coming down at them. I, I hear different things, but I don't know the, and no, in two of the situations, uh, one was a retirement, one was their kids were going to school. So they were done providing daycare to others as long as their kids were out of the house, so. But that's the model that is really being looked at. At Crosby is to take one of those individuals that has stepped out of the in-home and ask them to come and, and run this facility. So it would be, I think, a really nice model for them.
For, for fear of sounding self-serving, I don't think I'm, I'm not trying to be that way, but I would like to see the, the ads written in a way that, that reflect that Crow Wing County is working on this to try to help with this problem. I don't know how, you know, I don't know if I'm smart enough to write that, but do you know what I'm saying? So that people know that Crow Wing County is reaching out to help with the deficit in, um, childcare. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Do we, does the county license and, and take care of all of that, uh?
God, God over in Staples does our licensing, I believe.
Correct.
Through, I can't remember their name, but it's God. I call him God.
Sourcewell.
Yeah, Sourcewell.
Michelle Towgus is the representative that does just the home-based providers and identifies all those that are licensed. You can also get it through the state, but we know who they all are. We've reached out to all of them. As far as who are the in-home providers?
What about, say, more of a?
Center-based?
Yeah.
Center-based, we currently have nine in the, in the county. Nine center-based facilities that are in the county.
But how do they go about licensing and?
They license through the state, I believe.
Oh, okay. Tyler, when we were given, when Crow Wing County was giving out grants, I don't remember, did we give any grants to childcare facilities?
We did not.
Okay.
We actually looked through that, uh, good timing for that question. We actually looked through that yesterday, to look through our full list. And none of them applied to, to receive, no, I shouldn't say that. We had two home-based that applied, and I don't know that we, I, we didn't fund them.
Okay.
They weren't forced to be closed at that time. Am I right, Debbie? Correct. That came directly from the state.
Okay.
They applied, we didn't fund them.
Have we got that flushed out?
You tell me.
Yep, we do. We've, yeah, we've got an application.
So we're looking at a bucket of five hundred thousand, five thousand will be spent on advertising. I think that's where we're at. Do we have any other questions to cover? Oh, you wanted to appoint two members for this bucket.
Anybody got a special interest in daycare?
Oh, you seem to be really interested in this daycare.
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I will decline. Thank you very much. I would think.
Question, when we do that, you know, last, last time under CARES, we did, um, did we do Zoom meetings during that time?
We did.
Commissioner Corrigan will be gone.
We, we did them all in person previously, so.
But we can do them remotely.
I can, I can help out too.
So Commissioner Brecken is one. Do I have a second one?
I, I, nobody else wants to.
Will be assigned to this bucket.
Bucket, agreed.
A bucket.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. And Kara, thank you very much. Number two, Mr.?
The second, uh, proposal for your consideration is to send out an RFP and to accept applications from internet service providers uh, who are already in the county. And it would be to entertain project proposals, just like we did with the CARES funding. Um, they would be the ones that would propose the proposals. Uh, in this area, it's, it's, it's kind of infrastructure investment. And so the other thing would be to consider applications submitted to fund sewer district needs within the county. I've reached, I have final numbers now from two out of the three and have not yet heard back from Serpent Lake, but I have had conversations, so I'm expecting to. Um, we'd propose that the budget maximum for this at this time is one million dollars. There would not be a limit here on individual applications, let, uh, because what they would propose are swaths on a map. And so how big is the swath? Well, it depends on where the roads are, where the infrastructure is, so I would let them propose the projects. Um, I think you should require that the internet service provider or the sewer district fund a minimum of twenty percent of the total cost. If this was a broadband project, I would also reach out to the townships and cities that might be in the swath that is proposed uh, to see if they would like to, uh, contribute some of their, uh, American Rescue Plan Act dollars to a broadband project in their region. I know that there are cities and townships who are interested in doing so. And so I think that we can stretch our dollars a little bit further by partnering with those local cities and townships on this. Um, I would suggest that, um, broadband that is installed must meet all ARPA requirements, and there are some speed requirements that are important there. Um, and if it is later determined that the expenses do not meet ARPA requirements, then we would require all of them to pay us back. Um, and I would suggest in terms of the outreach here, we can mail applications to all internet service providers in the county, I think. I, I doubt there will be new entrants into the field, um, you know, new business that wants to come. But we could do some advertising. I just don't think we're gonna reach a target audience anyway. Um, I would suggest we leave the application open until November thirtieth or a four-week minimum. And these will not have that many applications, and so we would just propose to bring them forward at a budget or a committee of the whole meeting for you to discuss and, uh, make some determinations on.
I hate to do this to you, but going back to the bucket one.
That's fine.
And we have the four-week window for applications. Is that enough time potentially for people to, I know the ones that exist, it's probably enough time. For the ones that may have been thinking about it but haven't really put anything down on paper, is that enough time for them?
We just talked about that, and my recommendation would be, we can turn this on, it's ready to go fairly soon. I mean, we could have it just, I want to make sure that it's, it works, obviously. Um, but my suggestion would be is to turn it on November first and, and maybe add that, that first week of December just because of the Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay.
It would be a five, roughly a five-week window.
Roughly a five-week.
Yeah, and we'll have the, we'll have the communication ready to go before we even turn it on. So if that, if that's okay.
Is that okay with the board?
Yeah.
That we do that? Okay, so we'll make that one at the end of that first week of, uh, November.
Of December.
Or December, I mean. Okay?
This will need to be brought, brought forward for board action, and so I'll make the modifications to the proposal before it hits your, the table for official action.
Okay. And on this one, we have a four-week window, and I, to Mr. Hul's point, I think that this one, they're ready, these providers will come forward ready to go. So I don't think there's the need to have an extended period of time because of Thanksgiving or whatever. So I think that works.
Any other questions or concerns with that? We'll see what folks propose.
The million dollars, the twenty percent, the ten percent, any consternation about that? It's all quiet on the northern frontier.
Um, okay. May I move to number three, Mr. Chair?
Pardon me?
May I move to number three?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we would also propose that you open an application process for internal needs to respond to COVID. That would be focused on Crow Wing County's internal organizational needs. Um, we would propose at this point a budget maximum for these applications at one-point-five million. There would not be a limit on individual applications. You've seen some of the things in the CIP, for instance, that we may choose to fund in a different way. Um, and we would accept the applications from the departments through the end of November for this round of funding. There could be future rounds. Uh, bring the full list of ideas, uh, to an upcoming budget committee meeting for the full board to work through to decide, much like you did with the CIP. Um, and staff would prepare then a budget amendment for a future consent agenda for whatever the projects are that you select that, to move forward.
Oh, go ahead. I, I was just gonna say, would that include the, the judicial, um, so that's a million plus right there?
Mm-hmm. And if you think, I mean, double the number here, because this is only spending the first half.
Right.
You still have another half to go. So you could double these numbers if you wish to.
And wasn't judicial a two-year or three-year?
Yes.
Plan, so.
But it wouldn't have to be if we're gonna use this.
No, it does not, uh, probably getting it built is gonna be challenging.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Nick, you were speaking, Debbie, you spoke, and Tim, you were speaking. So let's bring, bring it down to one year at a time, okay? So Nick, what did you say? Okay, well, I had three voices and I couldn't understand what they were saying.
I didn't say anything, Mr. Chair.
I know, and I appreciate that. So clarify what you were saying again.
I, I think we may still struggle with supply chain issues. And so whether it goes into two years or not is probably more a function of what's going on externally than internally. So I, I think it might end up being a two-year project, but it would not need to be if you fund it with ARPA, if you could execute it.
It would just be one bid.
It's gonna be one bid regardless.
But whether it takes.
One bid regardless.
One month or, or a year and a half to do.
And then whether it stretches over a calendar year or not.
Right.
So, so as long as Deb's here, and I'm glad you're here, because I love to ask you questions. But I, but I, I guess on this subject, so, and maybe I'm just making a statement, but Lord only knows what next year's election is gonna look like. I mean, we, we know how it was last time, where there was a lot of townships that opted to do mail-in ballots. And I know there's some, I don't know, people that don't trust the election. I will say publicly that I trust that everything in Crow Wing County is being done the proper way. And there is no, um, fraudulent activity happening here at all. I, and I, as, I think I'm the most conservative person here, at least I.
That's not what you've been told.
Well, I, anyway, I'm, I'm saying that I have a lot of confidence in our system. So my question is on, I guess, on this one. If Deb sees, you know, kind of foresees the two, two thousand twenty-two election and some things that she feels might help her, that department better facilitate the election, could she submit some things, uh, under this? I mean, or Deb, or what, what do you think? I mean?
We certainly could take a look at if there are any needs that would be infrastructure-related or any needs that would meet some of those criteria. That's gonna be the kicker. There's not a category for election-related items necessarily within that ARPA guidance. But if there are things that we needed to procure or projects or proposals that we thought would fit within that structure, it would have to compete with all the other internal projects that would be there as well.
I still think this thing is kind of loosey-goosey where it's, uh, where I, I don't know if some inspector from the federal government is gonna come and say, mm, no on this, yes on that. I don't know. Do you see that happening, Tim, or who?
No, an auditor will come, and we know who it will be. It'll be Doug Host. And he will get a set of guidelines of what he's supposed to check from the federal government through the state auditor's office.
Okay.
And then he will go about the business of making sure that this check happened, that this check happened.
Okay.
We went through that process with the CARES Act, and it was, uh, more involved than we're accustomed to because it was unique funding and came through that with flying colors. Um, there were no notations in our audit. There were no expenditures of the CARES Act that were deemed to be, uh, ineligible. So it was a spotless record on the CARES.
There, there, you're exactly right. There were no notes or anything that came out of that. This round, the requirements and the qualifications are way more restrictive than what the CARES funding was too.
Okay.
That's the, I think there's how many categories? Five categories, but each category has a whole checklist of things that you have to figure out whether or not it will qualify and be considered for that. We are working under the guidance that we have right now, that is still interim final guidance. But the feedback we're getting is assume it's final until you hear differently that it's not final. So if we approve projects that qualify under the guidance that we currently have, and then they change the rules down the line, we followed the rules that we had at the time. There's nothing that says you have to wait to award the money. So if we're awarding the funds now, we're following it based on what guidance that we have now. If we end up with a comment on our audit because of that, that's the feedback that we provide as part of that is you can't change the rules after the fact and slap us on the hand for following what we had in place.
I, I think it might have been yesterday that Treasury spoke to that very question and said, if you rely on the interim final rule, yes, that's an oxymoron, the interim final rule, whatever it said, and you spent the money based on that interim final rule, if there is a subsequent change in the final, final rule, um, you're still gonna be okay. Treasury will allow whatever you spent under the interim final guidance as long as it's consistent with that guidance. So in, I guess in the bottom line is, I think we have the capacity. So in, I guess in the bottom line is, I think we have the capacity to do that. I don't expect we're going to end up with any blemishes having handled these funds. We know what we're doing.
So the departments will, will kind of put on their thinking caps or kind of try to be creative about trying to figure out how we can fit this into what they want us to do.
Yeah. It has to be COVID-related, and, but I mean, even things like mental health. Mental health services are called out more broadly than other services, and we are seeing mental health spiking in our community. I would argue that that's, you could tie that very directly back to COVID and the stresses associated with it, to the degree that we come up with an idea that might help to reduce commitments, get earlier upstream onto the porch for mental health issues. I think those are eligible. So I think we can be very creative here to see how can we make the best long-term use of these resources. I think that's what we're trying to do. Any other questions on that category?
No other questions, but I want to go back to what Commissioner Coring said about our election process, and I want to thank all of our election judges in Crow Wing County, our staff, and anyone else that works on the election process. In Crow Wing County, this board supports exactly what has taken place. We follow the statutes. We do exactly what we're supposed to do, and we find nothing nefarious about the activities that take place in the election process in Crow Wing County. I want our staff to know that we appreciate everything that they do. We know they're under a lot of pressure. They will be under more pressure next year, and they have the full support of this board. With that, we'll move on to the next.
That is exactly correct. Thank you. Number four proposal is to solicit a request from the Family Services Collaborative for funds to secure their independence. The Family Services Collaborative was originally a joint effort between school districts, the federal government, and counties to claim reimbursement for certain activities that when we record them and track them, we could draw down federal resources for them. Essentially, it's social work that is occurring in our school districts around the county, trying to intervene into family situations earlier than letting them fester, and then the kid goes off and becomes a dysfunctional adult. So that's what the Family Services Collaborative works on. The federal resources for that have been drying up slowly but surely over the course of time. I think we have the potential with American Rescue Plan Act dollars to make an investment that might help them to be stable for the long term without our necessary, without it being necessary for us to continue to put resources in. So that is the proposal. Happy to answer any questions. We don't have a maximum on it at this point in time, and of course, there is a maximum. We, we can't spend more than we got, but we would entertain their proposal. You could fund something less than that if you wish.
So in essence, we're, we're soliciting them and asking them what their number.
What I would characterize to them is, is there a number that you could, that we could deposit that would make you independent of us?
Right, and then, then our yearly, I don't know.
Contribution.
Contribution would go away.
Yes.
Okay, but we're not telling them how much?
No.
They're, okay.
And just, you know.
I think that's a good approach.
They might propose a hundred million. Well, it's not going to be.
What?
I'm teasing. I wanted a really big number. Thank you for reacting. You know, they might propose a hundred million.
Don't make me nervous like that.
That's up to you. It is still up to you to decide what to award, regardless of what someone proposes in any of these categories.
Yeah, good, I'm good.
Any, any questions on number four?
No.
And then finally, you just completed putting together our CIP at the last budget committee meeting, so I would also direct, or suggest that we direct finance staff to review the existing CIP list and to see, of those things that we're going to purchase, are there any that are eligible for American Rescue Plan Act dollars that we could hold down our local costs associated with those things? And so it's sort of scrubbing our CIP. Finance staff will review the list. They'll bring you that list at a, the next budget committee meeting, and you could say, yeah, we agree with all of them, none of them, some of them to pick, and then if you are okay with a list, we have to bring that in for formal board action. And that's how we run that process.
So then a question on that, then, once they have scrubbed that, your term, once they have scrubbed that, and they, they have, they say, okay, here's the list, then would we, in essence, be removing that off the CIP?
Oh, no.
List and, and putting it in.
I stumbled on this question with Doug last time. We don't take it off the list. If I take it off the list, it doesn't get done. The list is what we're going to go do. The funding source is the only question here.
But couldn't we have two parallel lists? I mean, the, the ARPA list and CIP?
For what purpose?
Well, so we, so we know how much is, how much is we're spending from the American Rescue Plan, and then we know how much the CIP list, and.
We won't have to create two lists to do that. We will know the answer to that.
Two different numbers.
But will we still have the flexibility to, that we can have an impact on our levy dollar, on, on the levy amount?
That's up to you.
Oh, okay, because that's where I was going with it, but I, I didn't get very far with it. But I don't care if it's on the list ten times, as long as we have that ability to look at the total dollars that comes out of the, of these federal dollars, and then have the decision what to do with those. And I think there's only two options.
That's it.
And, but, but to have that discussion of what, what those two options would look like.
And I concur with, I concur with Doug on that, because I think, to me, the board should be left the decision, do you want to leave the levy at three nine nine, or now that you've scrubbed that list and you've taken that, this is going to be paid out of this pot, and the levy could go down to three point two five? I don't know.
And still.
And still.
Help fund balance.
And, yes.
And I would agree.
I, I don't suggest you do that on the CIP. I don't. The capital, the fund balance for our CIP is below the target. We still need to build fund balance in the CIP. I do think there's an opportunity, if you wish, to reduce the levy, but it's not on the CIP, because you're just going to have to raise that levy again for the roof replacements that are coming down the pike, and so you're going to do this, and then you're going to go back up next year. I don't think that's a good strategy. Where you have that opportunity to do that, however, is on health insurance. We know what next year's increase is. We budgeted a 10% increase. We're not going to experience it. There's capacity, and I think you could do what Doug is talking about. So I can frame that up for you if you wish. I, I'm not recommending you do it on the CIP. If you want to do that, use your health insurance. The good bid we got for health insurance to do some of that. I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. I'm saying this is how you should do it. That's all.
But you recommend, and we, how do you, how do you say it in the past?
I can propose, and you will dispose.
That's right. I have, I have this piece of paper in here that says I can dispose.
Yep. And in the end of the day, we will all live with the decision that you made.
Exactly.
And the good, and the bad.
Yes, I like, that's my favorite movie.
The Good, Bad, and Ugly.
Well, I got the ugly part down, so you get the good and bad.
Well, I think it's key to look at what, what dollars we're talking about.
Yes, of course.
And then that's going to, I think, help drive the decision we, we make.
And I would, and I would say something, too, again, you know, as, you know, for, for those of us that were here before Bill and Steve, when Jason was here, and Rosemary will concur with this, we used to get a long sheet. This thing was that long, and he had, the decisions that we were making were on the information that he was giving us at the time, when we were on a eight-year at zero levy, and those were the decisions we were making, thought it was the right decision at the time. You know, I mean, a lot of people make it sound like it was a bad thing. I don't think it was a bad thing. I think that was a.
The information we had gotten projected out, and we would have never, we would have never gone over four percent ever, keeping on the trajectory that we were going. I wish I would have saved that stuff, but I just assumed that Jason would always be here, and Jason would always have that stuff for us, but no one's been able to find it since then.
And also keep in mind, those projections were based on recommendations that were not taken. They were not taken.
So another point of interest here is, the first three buckets amount to three million dollars. Buckets four and five, and we have six million we're dealing with. So buckets four and five have quite a bit of leeway at this point, although we could change any of those bucket numbers at any time.
Absolutely, and, and I think that's part of the point here is, you're going to get some proposals. You may decide you want to spend more on infrastructure, less on broadband, vice versa. So there's nothing that's going to lock you into those budget numbers, and we have intentionally tried to undershoot the mark so that you would have more flexibility. The other thing I've heard from you guys is concern about where the economy is going and that there may be a downturn, and so this also reflects that. It's hard to read the future right now.
It is, and I, I just feel like there's a down, I don't want to sound pessimistic, but I feel like there's a downturn, or something, something's going to give, and we got to keep the wheels on, on this machine and plow the roads and, and provide the services that we provide, so. Did we ever make a decision on the mics, or no?
I don't have one.
Did we ever make a decision?
No.
Are we going to make a decision?
We have people that want it, but we never made a real decision from the board.
I would like to have that, so I could slide it closer when I want to be more talk with a deeper voice and have it closer.
Do you want to bell on it, too?
I don't know. I think it's a good idea.
You know I want them.
I guess I'm the only one.
No, I said.
Rosemary has indicated she wants it.
Rosemary.
The other three are quiet.
Then just get them for Paul and I.
You guys are deeper thinkers than we are.
I don't know about that.
That's what we have for ARPA proposal. Is this ripe for board action?
Sounds like it to me. I'm a yes.
Yes.
Yep, okay. I'll bring this forward for you, and I'll give you an abbreviated presentation. I, I generally think, you know, you already know the whole thing. It's really only for the benefit of those who might be listening to you at home.
Commissioner Hoo, was that either a yes? It looked like, kind of, kind of like this. It was either a yes.
Thank you, Tyler. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's just a sore neck.
Same here.
So I'll take the opportunity at this point, because I know that a lot of work has gone into this, to thank you, Administrator Hooel, Finance Department, Kara, and Tyler, for all the efforts in this. We know that this is a fluid document, and you too, Commissioner Coring.
Thank you.
Yep, and so it's a fluid document that we're going to have to continually consider and massage and figure out what those final numbers are, but I appreciate everybody's work on, on this project. I know it's a difficult one. We feel often like we're picking winners and losers, which we technically are, but thank you very much for all the efforts. Appreciate it.
Tim, can these dollars be used for roof repairs, replacements?
Nick is indicating, no.
I'm, I'm creative, but that would be, pardon the pun, a stretch. That's a rubber, that's a rubber roof joke.
Yeah. Is it doable to?
Bad one.
Put an abbreviated allowable use together that we could take a look at?
Yeah, yeah, we have in fact kind of a one page.
We don't ever see that.
Don't you have like a one pager, Nick?
We have a one pager, but there's five categories that they have for us. It's public health, negative economic impact, premium pay for workers that are essential, then a loss of revenue for the county, which right now we have projected that the county will not experience a loss of revenue in the calculation that the federal government has given us, and then infrastructure for the water, the sewer, and the broadband. Those are the five categories we have to fit everything into.
Has to fit into one of those.
Yep.
And then, but then there's, there's certain criteria.
Some of them are COVID-related.
They're talking more sewer and water treatment.
Infrastructure is much broader than COVID.
Yes.
And so some of the categories are COVID-related, some of the categories are not COVID-related.
So broadband obviously isn't.
Broadband, for instance, is called out specifically. It was a question under the CARES Act whether it was eligible. It's clearly eligible under ARPA, but it's not COVID-related. So some categories have to be COVID-related, others don't.
So they want us to use our dollars to fix their problem, the federal?
I think they would like that if we would do that.
I hate speaking bluntly about it, but it's really not our responsibility either.
It really isn't.
So they're dangling that out in front of us, saying jump on this, so then we don't have to fund it.
I've been told that before, stay in my lane, so I'm trying to stay in my lane.
Am I out of my lane?
Huh?
Was that out of my lane? I'm sorry.
Stay in your lane.
I, I just, I couldn't help it. But if, I don't know if we can take a peek at that one page, just to get, just to get a better understanding of the.
Nick, why don't you send it to everyone, and any other reference that you have to the guidance. If you have a link to the best ARPA guidance, they can go and look around as much as you wish. It, it is, you know, it's complicated, but you can read it. I mean, we figure it out, so you guys can figure it out. So we'll give you the one pager and a link to Treasury. Okay?
All right. Our meeting is concluded.
Anything else you guys got that you need us to work on?
Anything else?
Oh, I do have one thing. Next week on the twenty-eighth, is that Thursday? I believe it's Thursday, the annual MHB Mississippi, Mississippi Head Water Board meeting is being held in Walker. All the board members are invited to that. If you would like to join us up there, there's a meal provided. There'll be fish from the Mississippi River.
It was scheduled for the twenty-ninth and changed. It was scheduled for the twenty-ninth and change, so I won't be there.
Okay. So I think it starts at nine o'clock, I believe. Is it nine or ten? I'm not, I should have had that information. Sorry.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. And if you're interested, there's a board meeting before that for variants along the river, so if you'd like to join more meetings, we'll be meeting before that meeting. But that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.